Are we recording?
We are.
Fantastic. So, we are here to talk about municipal court. So, Your Honor, you are on, or Debbie, or all of the above?
Well, I think just, once again, I just want to thank the council for this court and quarter for municipal court. Another year where I've passed the newspaper test.
(laughing)
You haven't seen my name, and that's a good thing. Really, I think you've probably kind of heard that I'm, this is going to be my last term. And I'm really sad, because this has been the best job ever, the best place to work, the best city to work. But, you know, my husband really, and I could probably just keep going, but the times have changed all the way around for my family, and they kind of want me to do some Grammy stuff, and that would not include a black robe.
(laughing)
And really, the need, the court's needs have changed, and, and so, it's, it's going to be a good thing for the city. But, the court's really been successful for the seventeen years that I've been here, and it's because every mayor, and I, I can't remember for sure, but I think, Mayor, that year number five. So, I've truly never had an issue with anyone trying to come in and run the court, and for that reason, the court's run really smoothly. And we're a popular court, and I think people think we do a good job and a fair job. So, the issue, you'll see me again, I'm not gone yet, not, not until the end of my term, which is the December of 2017. But because this is a two-year budgeting process, which I think is a great idea, then it puts, it's a little bit awkward for the court. Our budget plan for next year is pretty much the same. I mean, Debbie's fabulous on the details, you really can't ever cross her, and she knows what she's doing for sure. And it's the following year that's a problem, because the court's gotten too big. I don't know if you noticed, but they send out to judges these, where your court should be staffed, how many P, how many judges should there be, what, in terms of a part-time judge, how part-time should it be? Because pay is usually related to that time. And so, I think my salary went up this last time to, was it a six point six, Jeff? Or point five?
I guess point six.
Okay, so point six. The stats are saying that, that my position is a point eight one. And I have really done it because it's worked great for me, just because I don't live on in Port Orchard, which I think frankly is a plus, because I don't see everyone at church and the grocery store and on the street and so forth. But, the needs of the court have just changed sufficient, significantly enough that we need a change, and that's why there's a request for an increase in judge time, prosecutor time, and defense time for 2018. And that's reflected, and that's why budget A doesn't look, I mean, year one doesn't look like year B. I think there'll be quite a list of candidates, and I'm hoping that you'll let me work with, you know, just as a participant, or give some advice. Of course, I will give my advice anyway, if you would not ask. Because I feel such a loyalty to the court, and I feel like I, you know, know what's good for the court, in terms of people, and I know all the people in this county. John and I have both been here for a very long time.
I was counting, it's actually the sixth mayor for me, so I've been here just a bit longer.
A bit longer, but I've been an attorney since 1987. I started, you know, as an attorney, of course, and at that time, I truly knew every attorney in the county. And I don't know all of them now, but, and the numbers have increased dramatically, but I still feel that it's just, you know, and the city's a great city, great place to work, and that's about all I have to say. You're not done with me yet, I'll, I'll come next year and check in with you.
So, you said significant changes for 2018, which looks like including a half-day court session, what about going paperless? Is that going to be a big?
That's included in the supplemental.
Okay. Is that a?
We'd love to, but we haven't had the money to do it.
We've been trying to wait for other courts to get on board with it, to kind of piggyback onto their systems, which we would be doing. The system I'm looking at, Bremerton, has just started, municipal court has just started this year, and they are coming backing on to Federal Way, municipal court.
Is that the O Court?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it's a fantastic system that will allow us to go paperless, but there are expenses on the front end to go, get that far. Once you get there, then expenses will go down. There will be a yearly maintenance and things like that, but...
Are there many systems out there, Debbie, available?
Yes.
Are there?
There's a lot of systems, and they're all really expensive. The county has a system, but they have a huge IT department which manages it. We don't have that, so we, it would be, it wouldn't work for this court. We need someone, with O Court, you have someone, that organization is taking care of all the back-end things that we don't have the ability to do.
You say Bremerton is what I needed this year, I guess.
They've just started using O Court this year, they're working out all the bugs, so I figure by the time we get to it, they'll have everything figured out, and it'll be easier for us to, to get rolling on the program. There are other courts in King County that are also using it besides, I think they're Federal Way or whatever, let's get those two together. We could ask for a part-time, our part-time clerk this year to, for 2017, to be a full-time clerk. That's the only change for 2017. Yeah. Yeah, '18 is when all of the changes with the court, for the judge. We need to add at least a half-day court.
That's pretty.
For Thursday morning, and then, an hour on Friday to covering custody's new arrests and warrant, because they've increased tremendously on, we always have calendars on Thursdays and Fridays, and we have to give pro temp for that at this point. That would eliminate the need for as much pro temp time.
Okay.
How about facilities? How do you see facilities going?
We need that conference room. Really, that's what we need.
Our office is extremely crowded.
So small. And the employees get too close to each other, necessarily, and I, I think that they really are entitled to more space. And Debbie and I have talked about this, that if we had that confer, we have, I think it's called a conference room, but you know what I'm talking about. It's already attached to clerk's area, and it would really improve the ability of staff to work and equipment, and not be tripping over each other and...
Are you referring to the lunchroom in the back?
The Carolyn Powers Conference Room.
But it's not attached to the, you'd have to go up in the hallway, then?
Well, if we could put a wall, I mean, a door.
Bring your sledgehammer.
Okay.
We could make that work.
Okay.
But the courtroom's big enough.
They're expanding the court staff.
Right.
Right. If you put four people in that office, I mean, they're, it's, it's extremely small, and we've got all our files. We have carts that we haul our, our files in to go in and out of court, because we have no place to put them, and they're also kind of heavy. If we go paperless, at least we wouldn't have all the files in there, that would make it really nice. It'd eliminate a lot of that, but we still are really short, and we don't have much room in there.
We, we just finished a space analysis at City Hall, and, and your operation was one of the, one of the three that was obviously space constrained, and it was recognized in that report, so.
Yes.
So, we're going through a process to determine how we, whether it's expanding City Hall or building a separate building. In the short run, we bought that building for planning, and we're going to move planning out of downstairs and create some space for them. Their, their needs were probably the most pressing.
Because they've grown so much.
Yes. Police's storage needs were probably second, and then, your guys were, were right there with them, so. I'd gladly share the report, but it, it confirms exactly what you're telling us.
You're welcome to come visit anytime as well.
And I have.
Yes.
I try to avoid the courtroom as much as possible.
Yes. I totally understand that. Don't come on Mondays and Tuesdays, you won't be able to get in.
Okay. The only other thing is, you've got computers here for prosecutor, public defender, at public?
That would be, you have to provide those if you have a paperless court.
The online system, okay.
You would have to provide those, as long, as well as scanners, so the clerks can scan all the documents that are filed.
So, it's all kind of tied together?
It's all tied together, yes.
Anybody have any other questions of the court? Makes it pretty easy.
Pretty straightforward. I start out talking a lot, don't I?
Usually, you're first.
Right. Yeah, usually I'm first.
Yeah, we're pretty worn down by now.
Yeah. Quiet.
For all of us.
I don't know, I'm feeling kind of like, oh, maybe I really don't want to retire. No, I am going to. I wrote it down on a piece of paper and left it at home this morning, and everyone signed off on it.
I told my family I'm never going to retire, I'm just going to change occupations, so, I'm going to go be a greeter at Walmart or something.
Yeah. Well, I'll have a lot of, a lot of interesting things out, I can do, so, I'm not certain what they are right now, but I'll find them, that's for sure, so. No, I think, I, I know, we've just always, I've just always felt like the council, we didn't ask for anything ridiculous, or do anything ridiculous, or cause any problems or any lawsuits, and because of that, the council's already pretty, you know, always gone along with what we need, because it's necessary. And, I mean, I, I have tried to protect the city from lawsuits, because they can really hurt in terms of reputation, people wanting to move in or move out or, or whatever, and money, and insurance costs. And so, the city's gone along with all the things that we've wanted to do to protect the courtroom. I mean, I can't, I go to judicial conferences, and people know that Port Orchard, you know, we always have a police officer in the courtroom. Not all municipal courts do. And I have just, Debbie and I just got requests from Skagit County, wanting to know about all the signs that we have going into our courtroom. I mean, it's a small thing, but they're really important, starting with no guns, and other things that make the courtroom safer, and, you know, kind of prevent problems. So, I just think that it's just worked, it's worked really well, because we've had the support. You cannot be on the other side of your court. And, I mean, at some point, the judge here will have to be elected, and that will cost the city a lot of money, because you have to put the ele, on an election. But if, once you have a full-time judge, then it cannot be appointed, it has to be elected, like Bremerton.
What's the threshold for election?
Point seven three.
Point seven five. We, we asked for a point seven three, so you...
Point, you're right, point seven five is the...
You have the option to have an elected or appointed, and I made it that way, so it would be something that the city could decide. If I made it a point seven five or higher, then you wouldn't have no choice.
And the statistics are showing that we should have point eight one.
Right. Right. So, that's like a judge and a commissioner or something, I don't, I don't know, but I would...
And those stats are based on, on a paper system?
Case load.
Right, case load.
Case load. It doesn't have anything to do with paper.
Case load.
Yeah.
Like I said, O Court would use that.
It's pure cases.
That has to do with employees, not judge time. Judge time is strictly by case load.
Can you have two full-time judges? I just don't know.
You could, I don't think you would want that.
I see.
Yeah, I see. It would be very confusing.
I've never heard of it.
Okay. One handling one specialty, and then another. No, not so much. Okay, just...
Because we're in all criminal court.
Yeah.
And traffic.
Yeah.
So, we don't need really to do that. I, I'm really hoping that you'll stick with the current prosecutor's office, but we can talk about that really the next year, because I think they provide a level of professionalism that you can't get if you, you know, like, City Port Orchard has a city prosecutor, a city attorney, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, some cities are calling that their prosecutor for criminal and civil, and I'm just, there's some, again, it's a lot of liability issues, they don't do something right, and city gets sued, and that's happened to more than one city. So, right now, we've been really careful to go at the prosecutor's office, they have all the history. We have built into our contract, which Debbie really crafted, that we have to have an experienced prosecutor come here, it's not just a baby, just out of law school type of thing, and that's really important, and the same, we've gotten very good people from our public defender office. So, anyway, that's about, that's about it.
What, this is a management question, because I want to retire too, but...
Me too. You too? Oh.
But not when I retire, I'm just going to be here a year longer.
No, not a year.
Not a year?
No. Four months. Oh, my gosh.
These are all bailing.
What?
Just wanting to train the new judge.
Well, my question was, how, how much lead time do you think that working with the council should be to actually sit down with, with you and Debbie and say, hey, where do we want to take this, and get into, you know, two or three meetings where the council would really work with you to craft?
Find the right person and right plan.
Yeah, craft the future.
Maybe September?
Oh, I would say earlier, like next, July or August. I, I'm six months.
So, probably in July, we should, should be thinking about that.
That's a good ide, that's a very good idea.
September, I don't think it would give us enough time. Plus, there's budgeting issues.
And Judge Holman is retiring from District Court, that's a, not a secret, and some of the people that will apply for this job will probably apply for that job, because it's a full-time job, but it's an elective job, but because Judge Holman is retiring midway through his appointment, or for, midway through his elected four-year term, there will be an initial appointment, kind of like Judge Bassett in Superior Court. He was initially appointed because a judge retired within that four years. Now he's running for his first four-year term, which, by the way, he's a very good judge. But, anyway. So, some of the people that want to come here will apply for that job, and that will be probably known, I think it's in, Judge Holman's going to retire like in March or April. So, then, by the next August, September, there'll be a little better idea of who's, who is interested in the job. And there will be some issues, because I have never practiced law and been a part-time judge. I felt it was a total conflict of interest. And then, you'll have to decide, because you choose, the council approves.
Yeah, affirms, yes.
If you're going to allow someone to be a practicing attorney and be the, a part-time judge.
I'll be surprised if there's less than a dozen candidates.
Right.
I've got people.
Oh, yeah.
Reaching out to me already.
So, at any rate, it will take, it will be, it'll be a process for you to decide, kind of, what kind of, what person are you looking for that will fit the city's criteria, and that's important. So, anyway, that's not for right now. You have other things to do with this.
It's a long title away.
Long title away. It's just a long time away.
Just blank.
Does anyone have anything else, or do you want us to get out of here and bring up the next group of victims, or are we?
You're it.
Now we got to, now we got to figure out where to...
The slugfest is over.
Okay.
How to carve the apple up, I guess.
Yep. That's where we go now.
Oh, thank you. We'll be back again. Good luck, I, I just, it's always overwhelming.
Thank you, Derek.
Still hearing good things about Port Orchard wherever I go, so I think the...
Well, that's good news.
City's made some really good decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Of course, we were a good decision.
We agree.
Okay, do that here. Okay, happy Halloween.
Thank you.
See you next time.
All right, well, we still have forty, thirty-five minutes.
Can we talk about this supplemental?
To chat about this stuff.
This particular supplemental, Mike, you're spot on.
We don't.
If we can avoid it, I was talking to some other judges, if we can avoid it, we don't want to have an elected judge, which would be point seven five, so even in this, and how we can attack some of, because Judge Decker only wants to hold court two days a week. So, we're squeezing three days worth of work into, because that's how she wants it, and we're paying for a number of pro temp judges on the other days. So, the new judge, whoever that may be, we really want to hold court three days a week. Debbie's right, we want to do a point seven three, because at a point seven five, now we don't get to appoint our judge, it's an elected judge, and we have the election costs. So, even if we pay that judge at a higher rate, but hold it to a point seven five, I think we're better, better served, and this budget contemplates that to a point seven three.
Do we know, Rob, did you, do we know if there's some other external force that could force the city into a higher level? I mean, they said it was case load. Do we know where that case load number would be?
I had Sharon do some research for me on, on this, from the standpoint of whether, and there's another process we need to consider too, is whether we want to contract with the county. And I don't believe that's the answer, I know they don't have the space, and I don't think there's any savings to having them manage people in our space. I totally agree with the judge and Debbie that the county prosecutor's job, office does an exceptional job for us, and, and it really elevates the, the level of attorney we get in that room, but I think that's a fair question, that if there's anything else that would trigger us having, to have an election.
Take it out of your hands.
Yeah, to get, I'll get a legal, we need to get a legal opinion on that, to confirm that, if there isn't any other, I, I talked to James Doctor and another judge about, and they both told me, don't, he's an elected judge.
Right.
And over in Bremerton, and to, you know, keep it in your hands as long as you can, and that's...
Why, though? Is it a cost thing?
Cost. Yeah, and then we're not, is this body getting to determine who the judge is?
You never know who you'll get in.
Yeah.
Well, once you appoint him, you're stuck with the term, so you better select well...
Of the contract.
Term of the contract.
So, you, just like Judge Decker.
You mean versus elected, versus elected.
We've chose to renew her contract, we don't have to renew.
No, I appreciate that, but once you appoint her, she's there for the term.
Term of the contract, which could be a...
You're going to do a one-year contract.
You know, two, I, I would say you do a three or a four-year contract, and...
That's the same as an elected position, just that you're not paid for the election.
Election cost, that's true. And we're going to pay at point, whatever the case load determines, and point eight, point eight, whatever. The other thing to consider, you know, while I appreciate, we do need to go electronic records, and we should have done it a while ago. My concern is if by us implementing it, moving this forward, the forty-two thousand forward now, we, well, they may like a particular systems, there was many systems out there. And I think the last thing we want to do is have the person that's walking out the door
Pick the system.
Making the decisions for whoever's going to be using this system.
In the future.
And then I would hate for in the next budget process, for somebody else to come along and say, this system stinks, and we need, you know, Microsoft, or what, you know, whatever it is, and I think this could be delayed another budget cycle.
Now, what, you know, part of my question was, when did you want to start a process to look at it? Would be, I would think this would be ideal for the biennial budget review, to actually have, lay out a calendar that in June, July, and August, meet with the judge, find out what your decision points are, come up with what those are, and September then, as a council, say, here's what we want this to look like for the next two years, or four, whatever it is, and then attach your cost to it at that time, and then as part of the biennial review, implement it for 2018.
But what I'm, yeah, okay.
That's the financial side of it.
Yeah, no, I, what I'm hearing, though, and I agree with you, is that we need the new person to walk in January of '18.
Right.
To make the decision of what software they want, so you, you're going to fund it sometime along the year.
Well, we talked about, Rob and I did have a sidebar, Rob and I did, where, you know, by the time you get your, your court administrator is probably going to be the driver of it, and by the time we get the new court administrator in, we were thinking probably April of 2018, before they were even figuring out what they had.
Right.
Then they would make a recommendation to the council in the fall of 2018 to implement 2019.
That makes sense.
So, that was kind of the schedule we kind of looked at.
What, she raised a very interesting point that I'd never thought about before until just now, and that's a whole issue of allowing your judge to have a practice in addition to your judge.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's common, or not.
Some, some do.
Well, would it all...
All your pro temps are.
Yeah.
Well, that's true, but they're pro temps.
And then they conflict out.
Well, yeah.
Then you're going to have a whole bunch of pro temps, because you're going to conflict out.
And we, in my personal opinion, the contract is very generous for leave, and that's why we have, we sign a lot of checks for pro temps. I think the next contract needs to be a little, it's an opportunity to reset the bar, and it may need to be more generous in the compensation, because we're paying them at, you know, we're saying it's a point three, but we know that they're doing eight, point eight one, but on the other hand, we won't be writing as many pro temp checks either, and there's, there's some good decision points, and ways to, like I say, reset the bar on how we're doing this. It's...
We didn't have stats on case load, did we? I mean, these are, all these are going to trial.
And if you look at...
But it's funny, they're declining.
Page thirty-five.
Or flat.
The top of the page, that graph too, Debbie assumes that her staffing increase is going to happen, and I don't, I, I think the point six that's up there, that equate myself, but it's your decision.
I'm concerned that they want more room, or they need more room, or they...
We all do. This whole building does, and to be honest, there's a lot of room in the back end of that space over there, break rooms and other spaces that could be utilized for conference rooms. It's, they have a need, but their needs aren't any different than the rest of the building.
I don't, I didn't hear that they needed the space for conference, they needed space for the office there.
Yeah, but they wanted the conference room for the office.
They wanted the conference room to be able to expand that office area.
And there's a break room bigger than that conference room.
In their area?
In their area.
Oh, yeah. Okay. They wanted the window for their office, is what they want.
Yeah, so, anyway, I, I, my recommendation would be not to allow, so, I think we're going to need, next fall, to start a, one, Alan's right, we need a financial side of this, then there's going to be the process interviewing, some criteria, interviewing some candidates. That judge needs to hit the ground running January first, and doing a contract with them, and a confirmation process with you folks in December of next year, you know, with the latest. And then Debbie's going to be around till March or April. So, about that same, I think the judge should have, the new judge should have, be involved in that process to hire their own administrator, and then, we've got an overlap period with Debbie and that new administrator, and then in our 2018, we're, we're picking, you know, after that person gets in and, and, you know, acclimated, they're, they're determining what electronic record system that we need to have, because we do need it, that's, there's no doubt about it.
And the, the way it's budgeted is, the overlap there for the court administrator's two months, it's not the full four months. So, in the budget, and how we do the overlaying, so if, if she was going to go four months, the new person is brought way down, what we thought was, you know, the new judge will hire, but they'll probably do it February, March, or January, February, and then you have your two months to hope for overview, and then move on from there.
Okay, we beat the judge up, can we move on to some of these other ones and see if we can come to some conclusions? Or are we all in agreeance with the judge, the approach?
Yeah.
We're not going to find anything, but it...
Can I speak to me the case for?
Thank you.
Start at the beginning, or...
Yeah, well, it starts at the beginning with Public Works, and I guess the big one is the Public Works clerk for the general fund.
Well, Mark made an argument to not fund his clerk, and cross it out, and cross out Well, Mark made an argument to not fund his clerk, and cross it out, and cross out his seasonal hire too.
But the seasonal hire is a general fund expense, and his other expenses are public works expense.
Which is what?
Doesn't do him any, it's two different funds. So him giving up the, the public work summer employees does not impact the finances, what he's trying to do. So, my point is, go ahead and leave the seasonal hires in there, and go ahead and make your decision whether you want to have an impact utility fund. That's what I was saying.
Well, I would argue for the seasonal hires.
Oh, I'm saying leave them in.
Yeah, no, I, just for the rest of the group here, that.
I would too.
I would argue for that, because I think we get tremendous benefit from those.
Right, and it doesn't impact his decision point.
So, that one, we're gonna say, okay.
So that's page two then, to, to fund those two seasonal hires from the general fund. So back, back to his argument upon page one though, of the making Thomas a manager funded out of the sewer water fund, because that would be his role.
I, I think that's a very good idea.
Yeah.
That is such a great investment in our future.
The bottom line is, you have to come up with ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars to do all that he asked for. He said it was a hundred and seven.
Well, we have enough baked goods left over, we could start pretty good.
But, but a lion's share of that would come out of water sewer.
Yeah.
Water sewer, store, most of is gonna be stored for the water, I mean, a lot of it, well, no, that's not true.
Be water and sewer, he's water sewer manager.
So it's a water manager, public, the public works form, it's really a push, it only costs, it costs more because we have a higher, more expensive employee there. That's easily acceptable, so that, that's out of it. It's really, the question is, Hunter going to that other position, and then going ahead and rounding out the public works work. That's the real decision points there.
So we have two decision points there. One is whether Thomas, elevate Thomas to a manager, and the second was whether to add point four, which triggers all the benefit costs at a hundred and eight thousand for two years. So it'd be fifty-four thousand a year for a clerical position. But Mark was saying, he got the manager position, he can do without the clerical.
Right, right. He eliminated the one oh eight, then effectively added one oh nine in his new, new plan.
Yeah, I'm personally supportive of his plan of elevating Thomas, and Tony, and so on.
Sounds like a well thought through.
And adding, and adding another set of boots on the ground out in the field versus a clerical staff.
Yeah.
And all that's from water sewer.
Primarily.
So that come out of the utility fund?
Yeah, water sewer utility fund, correct.
So we're okay with a hundred and nine addition?
Which is actually ninety-seven.
Alan said ninety-seven.
Yeah.
Ninety-five, water sewer, yeah, so. And then not adding is, we don't need any of the conceptual design for.
Nope, that's what I heard him say.
Yeah. And I don't believe we do either.
Will the.
Are you okay with this thing?
The update to the air conditioning HVAC for sure costs a hundred thousand, or do you think you'll have any money left there?
I don't, that's funded currently.
That's in the budget.
Okay, okay.
And what, the decision point is, we're doing the energy audit.
Yes.
We don't know, one, if a hundred thousand's enough.
Think we need more heat?
Yes. I would suggest fireplaces.
Actually, we might be having to find more money than this, we don't know. I'm getting the information, we've put that in, there's a, there's a starting point. We don't know what the answers are to our heating problem, but we know we have one.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm now moving on to the street department operating budget, general fund. Away from signs, one sixty corridor. I think we had consensus on no for the downtown plan and the Bethel corridor.
Right.
Now, there was discussion between, Nick spoke to it more, but this, this, this funding area here, that we've got the hundred for one corridor study. Do we want to analyze one sixty and Bethel, and have to come up with fifty thousand more in transportation money?
Well, he said you could add fifty and get two corridors, travel on each.
Correct.
That makes sense.
And those are just studies, those are not any design.
Thirty percent design.
Yeah.
Which Mark is saying, in this day and age, can get you enough of a design to get you a grant.
I know, I would be supportive of that.
I would too.
Me too.
So that's, we need to find fifty thousand somehow in street funding.
For which one, for the corridor study?
Well, right now, there's a corridor study for, in the budget for a hundred for one sixty.
It's just, yeah.
Okay. Nick and Mark, Nick has said that.
For one hundred.
For, for one hundred, right, currently. He says that we could do two of the studies together, and get economies of scale for a hundred and fifty thousand, versus.
An additional fifty.
So an additional fifty would be needed to get.
And his recommendation was doing one sixty and Bethel.
Bethel.
Because of. Is Bethel corridor redesigned, or seven?
No, it's, it's a corridor study, which we.
We don't have on here yet.
No. That, it's, it's a component of this seven fifty.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah, it's a thirty percent design and a public outreach process determined that we're headed on the right path.
And the way Mark had it in here is he had fifty in two thousand seventeen, and fifty in two thousand eighteen, he had a crossing by any.
So if we went seventy-five and seventy-five, I think we could get it done that way.
Quick question here, this wayfinding signage, could that be pulled out of recreation reserve?
I don't think so.
No? No?
No, because it, it says right in the code, you know, recreation.
Park, the parks, pathways.
But if you're leading people to it?
Oh, is it a pathway sign?
Well, he's saying, there's some.
Wayfinding is bringing people to downtown.
You could.
You could do some of it.
I mean, to a park, you could.
Signs to, signs to our parks.
To Van Zee.
Or to the path, pedestrian path?
You'd be better off to use, if you go with the natural gas increase, you'd be better off to tap, because that's general fund.
Yeah, it'd be smarter there to not get into that argument.
Got it.
Yeah, it's just easier.
So are you suggesting we would fund it and take it out of natural gas?
Well, I mean, I.
That was part of the three months funding.
Keep kicking this bucket down the road forever, I think wayfinding signage is.
We got ninety, we got ninety thousand.
Oh, this is just an additional forty?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
No, we've got, we've got, we've got ninety thousand dollars where the signs will be on the ground by the end of the year.
You're talking about for the next two years.
I'm talking about the next two years to continue it.
Yes.
We've got.
I like what Sean's saying, because you want a new, fresh sign probably in twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
That re-rings the bell, I think, where it's gonna drop off.
So put it, so put it out to twenty eighteen, and fund all of that, or part of it?
I, I would, I would entertain putting it on our priority contingency list. And, I mean, and I'm saying that depending on when we get through here, how much money we're gonna have to find for things that we think are really important. And then if we had this, a prioritized contingency list, and if we have more revenue, pick from that. That's the idea, what to do with wayfinding.
I'm just thinking, you've got really one work study.
Okay.
What I was, what I was, you know, I'll make that, your tax dollars at work, so, you know, on the backside, we're gonna have that issue that comes out of this committee, what the recommendations were. And they will only be recommendations at that point, so you can still move it back. Because the, natural, natural gas, you're not gonna get to twenty eighteen.
Right.
And it's gonna just be a recommendation, and your wayfindings have to be, just be a recommendation there. So if you're right where you're actually, would wanna be, I think, if we did it that way, I'll, I'll just set it up, not tie the two together.
Right, no, 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 no.
But you can say recommendation for the wayfinding at a dollar amount, recommendation for the, and then we'll have the total.
Yeah, I like that. In, in twenty eighteen.
Right. Because you won't have that money kill that anyway.
Right.
You can apply for LTAC funds.
We can.
How'd that work out for us?
You know what, Cindy, we will. We'll make an application.
You just never know.
Yeah. And, and I guess this body needs to strongly tell the committee next year that we, we want, you know.
We've been very generous, and.
So that ninety, that's common, is it all going downtown? I mean, pointing people downtown?
No, it's everywhere. Some of it's, it's a, a kiosk at the waterfront, there's, I think, stuff out on Tremont.
Van Zee.
There's Van Zee Park, I think there's even one for Clayton Park, so there's a number of signs.
I was just curious, is there, I mean, is there stuff leading people to Mile Hill, or is there, so I'm saying in the future, you know.
Yeah.
It seems like this four blocks gets all the attention, and I just wanna make sure we're showing our entire community value, that we're, this isn't all about these three blocks that.
That forty thousand could be for the, leading to the McCormick Woods.
Park, or.
Just make sure that we're trying to balance these wayfindings to our entire city, not just three blocks.
So there's a forty thousand that I'm putting on the list?
For twenty eighteen?
For twenty eighteen.
Okay.
But we hope to have funded by LTAC or something.
And then at the bottom of that page, of course, we've got the Tremont contingency.
Right. That's a holdup there. Holdup, can of worms.
I don't think we brought anything forward from water sewer utility index.
Right, nothing forward there. Nothing. Nothing there, sort of compelling.
Your administrative budget, have you got that part yet?
No, that's next. I, I had circled, you had brought this up, Mayor, the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway West. And I circled it, had a question of timing.
It's. West. It's this.
Right, this right here.
Right, this right here, yeah. It's, it'd be nice to have, but I don't think.
You know, from a financial point of view, I'm not sure how, with all that's going on in public works, what kind of, in ECD, what kind of quality, kind they're gonna have to put on it, on that.
That's a good point.
A hundred thousand dollars with what you've already got going on.
Right.
I kind of, that's like throwing something on top of the pile.
I would rather focus our attention on stuff that we're gonna get done, like the park down at the other end of the parking lot, or.
Right.
And the design standards, there's just, we're just.
Perfect.
There's a lot of stuff on everybody's plate.
Great.
Which is great, I mean, I'm glad we're able to.
And some of this, you can, you remember, you're gonna have another bite of the apple next September, which isn't that far away.
So administrative, I think we were all in agreement that this nineteen-two plus the twenty, I'm sorry, the forty-eight hundred out of finance, I think we're all comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Not true?
Mm-hmm.
And then, we also had made a note that perhaps we're gonna do some, some research on the idea of perhaps assisting a helpline, at least getting information back.
If we can.
Part of this.
Yeah.
Just research, no, no recommendation, was just, what's our, what are our options when we get requests like that?
If, if it is legally permissible, what's the dollar amount you're thinking?
I like what you were saying, where we could tie it to fixed costs, you know.
Five thousand bucks towards their utility bill?
That makes more sense to me, but.
As she said, they don't need more canned food, I mean, they, they.
They need cash.
They need cash.
Is that too generous, is it two or three thousand dollars?
A limited period of time, in case they, it picks up and they do better?
I think we start down this.
Budget by budget, right?
She indicated that as soon as they had their mortgage paid off, they had a lot of cash.
That's right, and that was about a year and a half or two years.
Three years.
Three years.
We can help them just limp along.
So it is a limited period of time.
I, I have trouble opening the door.
Yeah, I, I really, before we put any numbers on paper, I think we really need to find out whether we can.
Organization and all of that.
We just went through this thing with the folks that are building up on Mitchell, trying to get through their graphic study and everything else, and what we could and could not do. And then we turn around to help out another one, it just.
No, I agree, I just, I just made a note to get, get information back, not tying a dollar.
There might be a way to do it that we just haven't figured out.
We just need to find out what we can do first, and then we can go from there.
Legally permissible first.
Right.
And the report back.
You're gonna open up a can of worms.
Yeah, I'm, I'm real worried about that.
We could say non-denominational, it has to deal with food or something.
There'll, there'll be plenty that'll come forward.
Well.
Whatever you do, it's gonna be questioned, Fred.
What, what, what might end up happening is it might be by way of this, this homeless committee. You know, there might be something there that there's a specific.
Well, they're, they're at the table, helpline is.
That's what, that's what I mean, so.
If it was way to. I know, a lot of nonprofits are stepping forward to help helpline right now.
So. I would just invite us to think about that, probably, since they moved, and they're up off Mitchell now, and they're doing that garden, you know, they're growing those things, I would suspect that they were impacted significantly with our water increase, our water rate increase, because they're, they've got that huge grow operation.
Should we contract with them to buy our baskets and maintain them, or something like that, to where it might help them out, but it's legitimate use?
Some, some, unorthodox way of giving them some, perform a service for us. Be a partner in the service or something like that?
Maybe we can do something with general fund, and maybe, maybe.
Yeah, well, we could check it out first, but I mean, if we're buying flower baskets for the light poles, maybe we buy it from them.
It'd be nice if we combined with some kind of service that you, like you just suggested, something that other, that, we were looking for a way if we're gonna help them, that we don't open the floodgates and have everyone, their, their dog with their hand out, and rightfully so. If we could tag that with some kind of service that they provide, or something that they do that others couldn't do. And I don't know what that is, I'm just saying if there's a way to do that, so that it's not.
They're probably really short staffed, though, just to let you know.
I know, but I'm, we have seventy people here, I'm talking about getting something creative, and if we wait a little while, we can think about that until the next time we come back at this.
Law enforcement. So to increase that.
Mining, community development, on the mining.
Skip a page.
Yeah, code city, the code city election, do you, do you.
It's in the budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's that temporary increase to stay.
It has to be left in.
That's a given.
Well, I guess you just need to say that.
That's a given.
Okay, yeah. So, Mr. Colson's saying it's a given that we need to give the chief the FTE.
The FTE could now cover that training period.
Yeah, there's no downside to that.
Yep.
So.
Totally.
That's what I thought it was a given, when Alan said he was gonna structure the budget document to reflect that, so. All right, now on community development, and I wrote down the signage and the conference room furnishings.
Yes.
And that's what I did too.
Me too.
What do you want to do about, oh, I'm sorry, what about the fire ILA?
There's three different, one, two, and three down there, and these are projections.
Right, and my project, I'll just tell you, I think that you should take fire, the revenue option three, because that's just based on what-if scenario, in the committee, and the city's always budgeted conservative. And that would be budgeting conservative, because we really don't know what kind of revenues these are gonna be.
And we need to recognize, these are annualized numbers, and we're doing a biennial budget, so for the biennial budget purposes, these need to be fifty thousand a year and projected. I mean, once again, we don't, it's based on activity, and we don't know.
So this is projecting a seventy thousand a year revenue source.
To pay a fifty thousand off. We know that the fifty thousand, we have the fifty thousand, that's fixed. We don't know what the revenue is, because it's based on activity.
Well, didn't we take the lower?
Makes a, builds in a structural deficit.
Right, absolutely.
That we have to find.
With the rates.
Right.
And if things slow down.
And the fifty thousand expense is over two years.
No.
It's each year.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar employee.
Revenue option would be each year.
Okay, yeah.
So I'll include that in.
Okay.
And I think we're okay with the ninety-five hundred from above, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And then Ellen?
We're gonna leave that to the.
Sorry.
I don't know about this yoga program.
We're back, we're still back at the other page, before you beat me up about that.
All right.
Ellen, yeah, I, I do believe though, that that salary survey needs to make that, we haven't done that for any other department to elevate anybody. If the salary survey says that we need to, then, then it'll be taken care of, if it doesn't, then it won't.
Now, can I move on?
You can be, you can beat me up about yoga now.
All right, show me what it's done for you.
Um, I can touch my toes a little better.
A little better?
Fine, just fine.
Yeah, I, you know, we're doing, I'm learning all kinds of weird. Yeah, we're doing, I'm learning all kinds of weird lingo, like downward dog and cobra, and so I'm the only guy in the room, though.
So, just a quick question, should we just term this wellness program, so it doesn't necessarily tie to yoga, in case a year from now they wanted to do?
Oh, it's that somebody.
Tai Chi, Tai Chi, Tai Chi, what is it?
Okay.
It's in the wellness program.
She was just trying to remember.
Great.
So it's adding a thousand dollars a year to the wellness program.
They should have their bake sale to raise money for this.
They donate some baked goods.
With the new HVAC system, maybe they do hot yoga.
Shorter classes.
We have. Because some days it's really hot in the building, and some days it's cold.
So are we okay with that?
And then we already approved the forty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the workstations and everything's already included in the budget.
Right, nothing there.
There's no supplementals.
There's something there.
Judicial?
Judicial. We said we're going to hold up.
We discussed that.
So.
We do need, no, we need to recognize that, but it's part of a budget amendment, I would say, for the point, to the point seven-three. So we're just going to fund it at the current level, is that correct, Alan? And then go through a process next fall to amend, as part of our budget amendment process, to add hours to the court.
Yeah, I thought the new person coming in would be at point seven-three, not the current.
But this budget doesn't.
I know, it's a biennial budget, so we have to deal with it then.
Next year.
And I think that you, this is why you have a biennial budget, so you have the time to really focus on the two or three things that are going to impact you for a period of time. Rather than just going through what we do all the time and, you know, look at things we've looked at before.
Killing the computers as well?
It's already in the budget.
It's already in the budget, it's just recognizing how many computers we were going to buy.
Anything that we're missing?
Not right now.
I thought that, I thought that the budget for the courts, the salary portion included, the new judge and.
Oh, I thought you were right. Point seven-three?
Maybe, it's on page seventy-three-seven.
I think she built it on the point seven-three.
It included the retirement buyout.
Correct, that's what I was saying, oh, okay, and I thought it included the point seven-three too.
I don't think so, it's Debbie's buyout of her retirement. It's a clear buyout.
Well, the court salaries go from three eighty-one to three ninety.
Right, but that's usually.
That's just normal.
Cost of.
Delivery.
But your benefits, what will your benefits do, though?
One sixty-one to two hundred.
Yeah, that was forecasted.
That's the buyout.
Yeah, oh, that's the buyout, okay, got it.
The other is just the colin.
Got it.
And the three-point-whatever percent salary survey.
Is that the buyout for the two of them?
It was in Debbie's.
Is that the buyout for two of them, or just?
I don't think the judge has a buyout.
Okay, so the buyout is for Debbie then?
Yeah.
When you say buyout, are you talking about cashing out?
Relieve buyout.
So you're on a crew for P T O? Well, all these benefits.
No, no.
Now, you have a limit on how much they can sell back, right?
Right, two hundred and forty hours on vacation is what's a buyout.
Two hundred and forty hours.
We carry that as a liability, a liability.
So you're faced with that, you're just faced with the expense versus accruing forward, and maxing at that two forty and.
There's a whole body of work called P I Ps post important benefits in the state government.
No, we've been.
We don't serve any money aside from that.
We've been, in two thousand fourteen, our court salary was three hundred and thirty-two, and then it went to three thirty-four, and then we've got it up to three eighty-one. I think that we have that point seven in there.
That has to go back.
We'll confirm.
Yeah.
We can do it either way.
Yeah, I just don't think it'll be quite the jump that we think it, I mean, I think it's in there.
I guess the only other thing, just to make sure that it's not skimmed over, and that is the, are we all in agreeance to the adjustment to the natural gas tax?
I wouldn't have that. Well, I support that, because I support it.
As an equity thing.
As part of, as an equity thing, and then the other issue, because then it makes us the same as all the other utilities. But we honestly have to supplement our revenue to debt service Tremont. I mean, we just have to.
Right, yeah, I know that's true.
So it's going from.
But we were talking about using it for something else.
To two to six?
No, it goes into the general fund.
Two and a half to six percent? It's going to six or two to six?
If we sell it as that, that makes a lot of sense.
Right.
Well, that's what it is, I mean.
I know, I know, but we were just talking about a different use.
It was revenue that goes into the general fund, that would fill in something that we would have to fund anyway.
We would have to budget, we would have to borrow this.
Cut or cancel or, yeah.
But I think that that would be a valuable bit of information to tell the public as to what we're doing with that. No matter what, they pay one way or another, we pay one way or another.
Well, they wouldn't, we would just be able to provide fewer things.
We would, if we don't raise revenue, because we're going to put all of our horses into Tremont, we'll be either, we have to either have to raise revenue or cut services, because we're going to have the debt service.
Well, in this case, if we're not going to raise the revenue, then we're going to have to cut services.
That's correct.
The yoga, the yoga. These issues that we just looked at, we forget.
Well, another thing is, I said this at the presentation on revenue, I mean, we're going to make a case to the grading agency that we need to borrow.
Yeah.
And they're going to say, why do you need to borrow? You don't want to say, oh, I need to borrow, because we're not raising the revenues that we legally have authorized to get. Because they're going to say, oh, that's okay, but that's not a plus.
Right. You can pay the interest that we're going to charge you because of that.
That's right, they will.
Back to the T V D conversation we had.
Yep.
At the play.
Well, I think all of that is something that needs to be communicated to the public, too.
I guess my last question is that typically at our work study, we spend a lot of time to brief the council that didn't participate in this meeting. Since everyone is here, it's more or less just going to be running through the changes for the public's benefit. And really, I'm assuming it won't be a lot of discussion unless you come up with the, oh, I forgot, between now and then.
Well, you know, I think that you'd like to pay, you know, I'll do the tax dollars at work, so they'll do the sheet. That'd be a great opportunity to highlight some of the priorities on that. And have people talk to, you know, where we are on some projects, and communicate, like Cindy's saying, to the public.
Well, yeah, it'd be a great thing to be able to explain what this budget is going to do for the community.
So we've got the current side, which was the stuff that came out of the preliminary budget, and then we'll have the backside, which is the additional, the things that got funded from these slim gems.
Where is that?
Secret document.
That's a document that you're not entitled to have until you've been able to do the handshake.
I didn't think we got it.
So we're going to get that?
Yeah, we use that each year during work study session.
Oh, wait, no, you can't, other conversation.
No. That shows what the mayor had in, then what we captured in revenue and changes that the finance department's going to have captured, L D F Ps.
It's just bullet points from what we talked about today.
And you're going to do the new ones, and then it's going to be in our mailbox.
But when we talk about the bank capacity. Isn't there a bank capacity discussion or?
You can pull out some of the major stuff.
Is there a capacity for?
As far as the property tax?
Yeah.
That's being used.
I mean, do we discuss that?
Well, we won't know what that is until T I B rules.
Because there's so much.
Right, we don't have that number from the county yet, we know, we have an idea what it is, and we've held that money aside, awaiting the decision from T I B. Well, about the same time we have that information from T I B, we'll know the number from the county on that property tax. And it's anticipated that we're getting the grant, and that we need that as part of the funding equation with natural gas and our street fund and everything else to make that supplemental document that Alan.
Well, I just, we haven't really discussed it publicly, and, you know, she's saying we need to talk about it, I think we need to talk about that.
I guess it was given to you for the first time this morning, early on, with this supplemental document, and we'll discuss that at work study also.
Yeah, we'll work on a presentation, and what we usually do is lead off with the chairman of the finance committee laying out, here's where we're at. And then this year, you can probably have a short discussion after that with John, then probably go to Rob and I and the directors, with Rob saying, here's the important things, and then if you want to point to, you know, Mark or Nick, and say, can you elaborate on that? And we could just do, you know, whatever time we're allotted to go through those highlights, I think.
We've got an hour contemplated.
And what it makes sense to on the whole Tremont thing to, you know, I agree, speak in front of the public, but to let them know that, you know, there's a lot of big guesses right now, and that we anticipate by the end of the month happening this, so when we come back the first of December, we'll be able to really hone in on what those numbers look like, just not to give them a false sense of, well, they said it was this, and now it's going to be this.
Or they're sneaking something around in the back room.
Exactly, so they know that, hey, this is a preliminary model, and it's an absolute moving target.
That's why that's a supplemental.
Right.
Because the only thing that's in the budget now is things that are known.
Right, and he wanted to speak to it during work study.
Well, no, I just really want a heads up that, oh, this rate may increase.
Right.
What, Alan also mentioned that.
It's not increasing anything.
Okay.
Normally, we would build this into the budget process.
I misunderstood, I thought you said.
And now, we're not, we're not including it in this budget, we're holding it aside for the Tremont, and we'll have all of these answers, whether we're implementing this or not, prior to the December fifth opening of the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, is everybody, are they aware of that December fifth requirement?
No.
Okay, we have to have a special meeting to.
We talked about. No, no.
Well, it's not to a dot.
Open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing.
For the public process.
It should be a relatively short meeting, but we do have to come together.
Are we contemplating the natural gas increase in the tax, regardless of Tremont, independent of Tremont?
I think we have.
Because it's got to be something that's in place when we go to finding Tremont, so.
Right.
I think we're going to have to implement it.
We're going to need it one way or another.
Right, and the other thing is, for people who think it's not been mentioned, it was mentioned in Alan's presentation of the revenue.
Yes, it was.
Was part of that presentation.
Just remind everybody again.
Yes.
I would argue that if we don't get the grant, we'll need that money to pay back the three-point-two, five million dollars that we now owe.
Right.
Back.
Okay, we are six minutes over, if there's something important, Cindy?
Number three, discussion, Holiday Good Neighbor Award, should we choose a date? Are we going to do it?
Fine.
Judging Christmas lights? Do you have any vans available?
Yeah, I think I could find one.
You know, I think we can also push for people to submit photos, when we did it before, we didn't really get the word out, but now, we might be able to get the word out that people can submit photos of their neighbors' houses by a certain date, in addition to the tour, but it might be a way to.
All right, anybody have any suggestions?
Alan, again, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Let's see.
Are there days of the week that should not be?
Before Christmas?
How soon can we do it?
Well, you can't start it until after everybody gets their lights up, December first.
So December fifth, after the other meeting, would be, could we combine those two?
Leave here and, no, we're not.
I just have another obligation that night.
So what night, sorry?
We're trying to.
What about Monday the nineteenth?
I could do Thursday the fifteenth or Monday the nineteenth.
I can do either one.
Monday the nineteenth, so Monday I could do.
Anyone else, the nineteenth?
Does that work?
Yeah, but that's a long night, wasn't it like five hours last year?
No.
Oh, no.
Ninety, ninety minutes.
No, it's more narrow.
It wasn't?
I heard you went on a three-hour tour or something.
We've gone on a three-hour tour.
Last year wasn't.
We can do one under two, though.
Yeah.
It was ninety minutes, and then we had a social break, yeah, for about forty-five minutes.
I can do the nineteenth, all right.
Six o'clock, everybody to get home and turn their business lights on.
Yeah, it's dark at six.
Yeah, it is.
It will be next week.
It's dark now.
Okay.
Except for this weekend, we gain an hour.
Yeah, we do, but even then, it'll be dark.
That doesn't affect the nighttime, huh?
It's the morning.
It makes it darker.
Okay, so we decided the nineteenth at six here at City Hall.
Do we have to RSVP?
Yes.
You let the clerk know so she can notice it.
So we know what size vehicle, if the public wants to go.
Right.
We can turn the recorder off, I think.
If we, we have too many, it's going to limit.